So it is October twenty first, twenty twenty one, I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. We have a published agenda, is there any changes to the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as published?
Second.
It's been moving seconded, is there any discussion? Any none all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone to post?
I abstained because I wasn't at the meeting.
Okay, then this motion still carries. And we have an agenda and first up on our agenda is the pledge of allegiance. So next up is the approval of the agenda, oh, we already did that. I guess I went out of order there, didn't I? Well, then we have received no public comment on for today. I do not have a mayor's report and so we'll go straight to this in manager's work.
And the city's manager report will consist of the twenty twenty two budget presentation, so. I know this is an exciting time of the year for council to see my hundred and twenty slide presentation, so please be prepared. But in all honesty, we hope to give a good overview of what is in the twenty twenty two budget. It is taxpayer dollars and we do take those responsibly, so. Want to begin tonight by just kind of referring to the Lacey budget cover. If you look at the budget cover, the city's commitment is printed on that to remind our residents and our businesses that quality service, community leadership, and innovation local government is really our primary missions. And I think everyone in the Lacey organization and I believe also elected officials, believe and commit to that three primary principles in terms of quality service, community leadership, and innovation in local government. Despite the ongoing health pandemic, the city continues to focus on those principles. We also continue to grow as a city. This year with two recent annexations, Lacey is the largest community within Thurston County. With the month with this milestone, I think it brings new opportunities and a new role for regional leadership. The city has a solid reputation and I believe our local brand of government should be held up as a model for the delivery of service, of essential services and also good governance. As part of tonight's presentation, I will highlight the twenty twenty two budget, which continues funding for an extensive construction program within our three utilities. It also includes funding for specific public safety initiatives through a combination of partnerships and technologies. It also makes major investments in one of our greatest assets, which is Lacey's workforce. Because city government within the Washington state depends so much on retail sales as well as the primary source of revenue and a robust economy. I typically like to start the budget presentation by focusing on really the broader economy and also what's happening locally. So with that, I will share my screen and begin the presentation. Give me a thumbs up when you can see the cover.
Who helped you with all the slides? I'm sure some someone in your did a great job with all these slides.
They did and I will and actually this is a good time to sort of comment, Donnie Donna Flesiano. This is a beautiful cover, this is obviously a great picture of Woodland Creek Community Park, you can see the the White House, I guess that would be the foreground, but again, it's one of our most precious assets within the city of Lacey. So it's hard again not to talk about what's going on in the world without just sort of acknowledging the health pandemic. Four point nine million people have passed away because of COVID nineteen. The United States represents fifteen percent of that total at over seven hundred thousand deaths in this country. And then locally, we also have had a significant impact with over almost twenty thousand cases of COVID and over two hundred people dying of COVID nineteen and that has affected everything that we've done really for the last twenty months. But I want to talk about what this is all meant, this graph really shows the gross domestic product of the United States. Since twenty eighteen, we have a twenty trillion dollar economy. And as you know, the federal government passed two major legislations, two stimulus bills, one was the CARES Act. And the other was the ARPA Act, so the CARES Act was two point two trillion dollars. And then our back was one point nine, so almost four well, four plus trillion dollars was invested into the economy in response to COVID nineteen. And just to show that relationship when we talk about the healthy economy, the CARES Act represents over ten percent of the GDP for twenty twenty. And then in twenty twenty one, the ARPA Act or the American Rescue Plan Act represents eight point eight percent. So there is kind of some discussion about is the stimulus propping up the economy and will the economy be able to stand on its own once that money has been expended? And as you know, there's also further talk about an infrastructure package that ranges from anywhere from three trillion to three point five trillion dollars. So that is something that we're thinking about as we develop the budget. The other thing too that we looked at, we were concerned about just the rise of bankruptcy, so this slide shows really publicly traded companies or companies that are privately held that have large amounts of public debt. In twenty twenty was the most significant bankruptcy in about ten years. Twenty twenty one looks to be a better year for bankruptcies. So in some regard, you could say the stimulus had worked when we were dealing with all the closures as related to COVID nineteen. Another measure, and I think we all know that the travel industry and hospitality industry was completely shut down because of COVID nineteen. On average, you could have two point two to two point six million passengers go through the gates of our national airports on a daily basis. And what this points out in April of twenty twenty, that number went down to about a hundred twenty four thousand, that's how dramatic the shutdown was with COVID nineteen. And as you can see with the green bars, this is the twenty twenty one relationship in terms of daily passengers going into airports, it hasn't quite recovered when you compare that to pre-COVID numbers, but it is better obviously than twenty twenty. You know, I thought this would be interesting because there's been so much discussion about the shifting habits of consumers and going to online purchases. This is our top five retailers in terms of volume, but also just market share, I just want to point out that Amazon is the second top retailer in the United States, just obviously behind Walmart. Walmart used to be bigger than it was even four years ago. And Amazon is predicted to overtake Walmart within less than five years, which is pretty astonishing when you think about that. And I think again, that just shows the evolution and the changing trends and how consumers want to buy goods and services. And just to kind of emphasize the point again, this only looks at e-commerce, so again, you see the same number from the previous slide from Amazon, which they do three hundred eighty six billion dollars worth of business. Walmart is second in terms of e-commerce retailer, but a small percentage compared to their larger retail footprint is in e-commerce. Interesting enough is that Amazon has two hundred million prime customers, which is about sixty percent of the total population of the United States. So again, this kind of again goes to the trending of people wanting to buy stuff online or picking those up. I will point out Home Depot is another one, when we think of Home Depot as our largest lumber retailer as well as hardware store. Even they have a significant e-commerce and as we know that they built about a one point eight million fulfillment center within the city of Lacey reacting to that new market. So you've probably heard a lot of discussion about inflation and it's kind of put this as a reminder, inflation is one of those things that is sort of a an invisible in a sense economic activity that really erodes the the wages and salaries of the American worker. And this is just shows a political cartoon where you have the US consumer kind of intent, not know what's going on, but inflation being the bear. But that was kind of a way to illustrate, you know, kind of the fear of inflation, not knowing when it does hit. But to put real numbers to inflation, in twenty twenty one, they're projecting that inflation will be five point four by the end of the year. We've had five consecutive months of over five percent inflation over or consistently for next five months. If you look in the past, say, you know, since twenty eleven, we haven't seen this type of inflation really prior to twenty eleven. Even though it seems tame compared to the nineteen seventies, it is sort of a cause for concern. So what is causing inflation and I'm sure you've heard all of them, I'll just kind of highlight three issues. One is logistical bottleneck, it's kind of interesting, if you looked in twenty nineteen, it would be it's now thirteen times more expensive to take a container from China to a US Westport. And that's just because demand has risen and there's some other factors involved of why that is now so expensive. There is a truck driver shortage, I'm sure you've heard about that within the news. Out of every nine jobs that are posted, there's only one qualified driver, so now you have a bottleneck of the goods sitting on the port, not being able to get on a truck and then out to stores or other areas. And I think you're seeing on store shelves too, when you go shopping that certain things are not available and again, it's blamed on this logistical bottleneck. And then and the picture in the upper hand left here is kind of interesting. You're now hearing about stories of cargo ships not being able to get into port to offload their containers. And so they're now waiting on average two point five times longer than they were pre-COVID. So that's one issue, the other issue is this sort of phenomena where there is still eight point four million people unemployed, but there's ten million jobs that are posted. Which seems odd, it seems like a weird math problem. But with the problem that we're seeing in the market is there really is a mixed match of the job skills needed and experience for the jobs that are currently made available. And so if you just took it, say, education and health services, you have one point seven million job openings, but only one point one million workers in that area. So it just kind of reminds what is happening within the economy, some people are opting not to go back in their traditional sector that they used to work in. And then you have certain areas of the economy that are doing well, but they cannot find enough workers. So again, that is also causing a rising factor in wages, which eventually consumers will end up paying for those labor costs that are increasing. And then you've all heard about the chip shortage, the computer chip shortage, so. Again, this is caused by a number of factors too, one is the fact that we have now all started to buy more computer hardware to advance our teleworking needs. So with all the demand and then there's still demand for even things like automobiles, they're now fighting for those same microchips. It is interesting that you've probably heard stories about Ford building vehicles, but then they can't finish them because they miss the key chip to actually make that truck run, I'll show you a quick video. Ford has rented space at the Kentucky Speedway to put unfinished trucks in, so let's see if this will work. So that represents cars are not being able to become on the market, there's nothing to sell, that has put pressure on used cars, so never in my history have I seen a used car appreciate, that just does not happen, as soon as you drive a new car off the lot, it typically depreciates. What this example shows, a two-year-old Dakota Toyota Tacoma, brand new two years ago would have been twenty nine thousand dollars. Two years later, that same Toyota Tacoma with average miles is now worth three point five percent more, thirty thousand, then the dealer would take that and then resell it for thirty three thousand. So it kind of an interesting phenomenon comes to use cars, I've been trying to talk the finance director into selling his Toyota and make some money, but he he said he doesn't know what to buy after he sells it, so I'm still working on him, if you can talk to him, that'd be great. So let's look at the locals perspective, I know the kind of the national outlook and kind of the stuff going on with shipping logistics is a little bit mixed, but we do have some bright spots in the economy, I do want to kind of highlight some of those. As you know, in the last ten years, we've had significant warehouse and logistical distribution building within Northeast Lacey, this picture really shows the last ten years, most of these buildings have been built. The Home Depot, which I mentioned earlier is about eight or one point eight million square foot facility, Amazon recently opened and then Target, which is in the middle was actually built in the early two thousands, but most of those buildings have been built in the last ten years. This is a really good graph to kind of demonstrate the activity and really in the last five years from twenty sixteen, you can see the rise in really the fulfillment center or warehouse distribution center. And it really speaks to the trend of online purchasing and just the sophistication of logistics and how that has matured over the last ten years. Obviously, we have very few parcels to maintain this type of activity, we have one on the Evelyn Betty piece that can accommodate, I'll say a multiple hundred thousand square foot facility. But this this is probably a peak we're not going to see again, at least in the short term. However, we are seeing a strong multifamily construction, if you go down Sixth Avenue today, you'll see this building in particular is going vertical. This is right next to Paulson's. And anyway, this is a hundred fifty one unit apartment complex, this is in the midtown area. And this has been one of the long-term goals of the city council to actually get market rate housing within that area, so that is a bright spot. We have another project on Martin Way, which is a key corridor, transportation corridor. And this is another building that has not built yet, but is slated to be built, which is ninety six units and we have others, but again, we're still seeing a lot of robust multifamily development and we've had at least eighteen hundred multifamily permits issued since about twenty sixteen. Terms of retail, we're not seeing a lot of robust retail, but it is nice to see an area off Pacific and Slater County, this is called the Landing. And they're going to redevelop three acres of property, which is currently ongoing right now and put a brand new restaurant, Chipotle, as well as a convenience store and some future retail, so it is nice to see some activity still occurring, even though it's not the large scale retail that we've seen maybe say ten or fifteen years ago. This is a bright spot in terms of our retail footprint, tech equipment is a dealer as well as a service center for semi trucks, they sell both Volvo and Mack trucks. And this is being built out of Northeast Lacey Rock Cross from the old Hickory Stick. And so this is a nice addition to again, our retail footprint within the city of Lacey, when we were talking about sales of semi trucks and also just the jobs it provides for servicing diesel trucks like this. But again, just to remind and council, I know you've seen this slide a lot, we're still mindful of the fact that really our retail is is undersized for the community of our size, we are now the twenty fourth largest city within the state of Washington. But our retail sales per capita is at seventy one. And if we're going to provide essential services for a growing community, this is something that we need to continue to focus on and hopefully help out our economic development. So that's your kind of your global as well as your local, so let's just talk about total budget a little bit. So the twenty twenty two budget obviously is balanced, it's a hundred and seventy three million, if you want to round up to a hundred and seventy four million dollars. This shows the major components of the total budget, which includes the general fund, utility funds, which is the three utility friends, including water, wastewater, as well as stormwater, capital projects, debt service, special funds and internal service funds, and I'll go through some of the variations later in some slides. I do want to take some time just to again emphasize the fact that is a responsibility we take very seriously to track taxpayer dollars, we have twenty nine funds that we track specific dollars, if I highlighted the transportation benefit district, that is very specific dollars approved by the voters that are supposed to go to street maintenance. Those dollars are accounted for and expended appropriately based on the mandate from the voters. Likewise, Hicks Lake Management, the owners fronting Hicks Lake Management decided to gather to organize and actually fund improvements with lake water quality and that fund is also cared for the city and that can only be suspended on Hicks Lake management activities. So again, hopefully this is one way to show that we are tracking money appropriately, but also shows a little bit of the complexity of the Lacey City budget. So going through some of the changes from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty one or twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two, just in briefly, I talked about the six different categories, so we are seeing about a six percent drop in the general fund. That does seem kind of odd since we're adding employees and why isn't that the basically overall general fund is going down? Primarily is we had one large project, which is the Lacey Veteran Services Hub project, which is about one point seven million dollars. So that project was a non-recurring project that was one-time dollars. And that does not that offsets the one point two million that we're investing in new general fund employees, so that's why you're seeing a deduction there. Capital projects, same kind of a reasoning behind there, capital projects includes arterial street fund. And so the arterial street fund finished two major projects in twenty twenty one, that was the Ruttle Road improvements as well as the expanded Hawks Prairie Roundabout. Those projects are obviously not reoccurring, we're shifting more to design within our arterial street fund and so you're seeing a significant drop in that category within the total budget. Special funds are made of really just two funds and that is the lodging tax fund and as I mentioned before, the Hicks Lake Management Fund. The reason you're seeing a forty percent increase is because we are now back to a level of funding for events that we traditionally did with pre-COVID, now we did rely on reserves for that. But you're starting to see a spending level commensurate with a twenty nineteen versus a twenty twenty. So that is a positive when we look at that because those are very specific funds to a specific activity. The Dex debt service went down twenty six percent, that is a direct result of us paying off a fire bond that was approved in two thousand by the voters for facilities as well as apparatus. That will we'll talk about that further in there, but that is a good news stories for taxpayers that were paying off our debt obligations twenty years later. Utility funds are seeing eleven percent decline and that is primarily due to just less activity within utilities. Not to say that we're not stealing a significant amount of activity, we're just not doing as much activity from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. And then the eternal service funds are really two primary activities in internal service funds, one is our fleet management, where all of our rolling stock, our cars, trucks and other vehicles are kept and maintained, the other is our information services department. The primary increase in that one is really just all the devices that we are now including, which now need to be maintained as we responded to teleworking requirements as well as also expanding mobile devices with the police department as well as public works, so they can actually work out in the field. So those are the changes between the twenty twenty one budget and the twenty twenty two budget.
Do you want to wait for questions in the end or as we go along or how do you want to do that?
I'd be on good either way, if if you want me to wait till the end or we can do it as we go.
Is there a preference from the council?
Eighty more slides to go.
Okay, well then.
Just keep rolling.
Let's just let's just keep rolling and then write down questions, we can kind of go back to them.
Okay.
Slides to.
So let's talk about the workforce enhancements, and this is one of the important or key points that are in the twenty twenty two budget, so we are including two community service officers within the budget. They provide a key functional support role for the overall police department. We're also including an IT specialist to assist with the police department, but it's also related to a new body worn camera program that will be initiated in twenty twenty two. And then the other is a requirement for a record specialist, which is also required for the body worn camera program. I mentioned before, we have extensive work in our capital projects with our utilities, we have a need for another inspector. We also have a need for another civil engineer as it relates to general fund projects that we do. It could be as simple as, you know, working on the police station project or even doing a project related to public art, so we're just needing that capacity for that, so another engineer is added there. We're also adding another project here to help with construction management, we have one person does that now. That person oversees really road construction as well as utility destruction and contract management, so it's a needed addition to our workforce. And also just giving the projected improvements that we have with the upcoming six-year plan in water as well as wastewater, we need two civil engineers to manage those projects. The other workforce enhancements that we're talking about is a grant administrator, we finally just reached the stage in the evolution of our community, we need one central person to manage the grants. As you know, we received a grant from the federal government for the American Rescue Plan Act, Recovery Plan Act, and that is something where that person would be overseeing, we're also added a civil engineer to monitor our stormwater programs to maintain all the additional mandates that we have related to stormwater quality improvements coming from the state and federal government. And then we have two utility positions that we've added, one in water and one wastewater. So just sort of take a sort of a thirty thousand look at our workforce, we have essentially three hundred and three employees with this budget if those positions are approved. The majority of those positions are dedicated to the general fund activities within our city workforce. And then about less than twenty percent are related to the maintenance and operations as it relates to water, wastewater and stormwater. I think this is just a good graph to show over time how we've added workforce, really during the Great Recession, we kind of peaked back in two thousand nine with two hundred and fifty two employees. And then we became stagnant just because of that economic you know, constraint that that caused from the Great Recession, it actually caused us to dip below in twenty thirteen, so we see a period of time where we really did moderate hiring just to maintain essential services. And then it took us really until twenty seventeen to recover really from the Great Recession. And then you've seen incremental growth to twenty twenty two, where we're reaching now a workforce of over three hundred and three people. I tried to use the slide because I'm sensitive to the fact when we add people, are we adding the right resources given the population we have, but this does clearly show that we have less employees per thousand serving a larger population than we did even in twenty ten. This more is, you know, a match of say, twenty twenty thirteen or twenty twenty twelve, and even that was lower compared to previous standards. This does not include the new annexation population that we just recently acquired through the Chamber of State's Cap City and then also Marvin's Silicon Road, so that number would be closer to about a five point two eight if that was included, but this is our official population that we're using. Also, I just want to be mindful of just the cost of labor, again, if we need to ensure that when we create a workforce that's going to be sustainable over time. to ensure that when we create a workforce that's going to be sustainable over time, but I want to be very clear when we talk about adding workforce is this is what the impact it is to the budget. So in twenty twenty, it was just under thirty million and twenty twenty one, it increased to thirty million. And we've added these additional, at least in the general fund area, eleven positions. It's now over thirty three million. So that just shows just the the total cost of labor and benefits over time. So let's talk about the general fund. This is kind of where everyone wants to know how their tax dollars is being spent. I think this is a good graph that shows a good overview of just sort of the major sources of revenue and how we pay for essential services. So essentially fifty four percent of our revenue comes from taxes. Onto the side of that box kind of shows that breakout, sales tax and property are our biggest one at really thirty seven percent of the total tax base of that fifty four percent or the total budget. And then utilities and then other is BNO tax, admissions tax and gambling tax. But that shows you in terms of some of the revenue or the taxes that we rely on to fund our essential services. Permits are somewhat self-explanatory. That's coming from the building department and rec fees. Others are the direct work that we do and pass the utilities and other miscellaneous funds like transfers as well as beginning balance and also interest on revenue. And then, of course, we get state shared revenue. So another look at just our major revenue sources. So here is a here's our graph that shows sales tax budget over time. So for this year's budget, we are projecting four point two four for sales tax. This represents about a two point six million dollar increase in sales tax. Obviously, you're seeing a dip in twenty twenty. Again, that's a budgeted number. That's not actual. But that shows our reaction to COVID at the time when we took about three point seven million out of the budget. So that is the twenty twenty two projected sales tax, which is fourteen point two four. When we look at property tax, we're looking at almost eight million dollars for property tax. This is obviously a steady revenue source for the city of Lacey. This is based on last year's levy assessment, which we were able to grow about seventy five thousand dollars, almost seventy six thousand dollars. It also includes new construction as well as annexation from the Marvin Road and Silicon Annexation. All combined as about three hundred and twenty nine thousand dollars. So you're now seeing a new revenue from property tax of just under eight million dollars. I will point out in twenty ten, if we kept it in here, you'd see a very larger bar and that that was the transitional year that we no longer paid for fire services out of our budget. But we agreed not to collect that since dollar fifty. So I'll have to put down a different chart just to show that relationship. Here's come another milestone for the city of Lacey. We are now nine billion in assessed value. So if you take all the parcels within the city of Lacey, all the taxable parcels, it now equates to nine point one billion dollars. So we have nearly doubled in the last ten years in terms of the assessed valuation of our entire community. That's a pretty significant milestone. I think it one speaks one to the growth, but also just the valuation of our community. And we talk about this all the time, and I appreciate the mayor as well as councilor Kunkel spending some time on conversation with council, talking about property taxes. But this is one of those issues where we need to point out again, as assessed valuation continues to increase, it will actually decrease the levy rate. Those there's an inverse relationship there. And probably the best way to describe that is to overlay the two. So as assessed valuation increases, you're going to see a decrease in our levy rate in a sense there's more taxable property to spread out a fixed cost, which is our general levy. You can see in twenty thirteen, that was kind of the the depth of the Great Recession. You can start seeing that our levy rate increased, which is to make up for the lost value, but also we had to maintain a fixed general levy amount. And so you needed a higher levy rate to collect the same amount of money to maintain that property tax collection. Going to ask for a little bit of leeway here and kind of go through the mechanics of just city property taxes. And I appreciate the time and maybe the concern that taxpayers talk about when it comes to their property taxes. And so I think it's worth just sort of going through a step-by-step process in terms of how property taxes are calculated, especially the city's levy rate. And I want to be very clear, this is very distinct and different than the schools levy rate, which is a fixed rate, at least until twenty twenty one. So first you have to take the assessed valuation of your city. And the one percent limitation, which most people assume that's on their own property, is really the one percent on the total levy that the city actually can grow. So in the city's case, let's say we have a levy, and this is just an example. This does not pertain to the twenty twenty two property tax levy. Let's say we have seven point five million. And we're not going to include new construction or annexation, but we have seven point five million. That is our fixed levy. State law says that we can grow that by one percent. So we'll grow that by one percent. You see that that grew by seventy five thousand. That is the one percent limitation that we can grow up to. So then now that we know the assessed valuation of the entire community and then we know what our actual city regular levy amount is going to be, we essentially take that amount and it gets spread over the assessed valuation of the entire community. So I was helping do math with my son. It's always good to show your homework. And so this is essentially what happens. The city levy rate is calculated by dividing the total amount of the proposed city levy by the city's total assessed value. So if you look below, you take the new regular levy, which is this number, the seven point five. You take your assessed value. I'm sorry, you take the new assessed value or new regular levy, which is seven point five seven five. Take your assessed value divided by a thousand. So in this case, we have eight billion of assessed value divided by a thousand. Now you're taking seven million five hundred seventy five thousand, which again is the new regular levy divided by eight million. Then that gives you your rate. So we do not calculate the rate until we go through the steps. So we don't know. And again, if the assessed valuation is lower, that number is going to be higher. If the assessed valuation is higher, that will then go lower. So that is your quick primer on the mechanics of property tax. So back to the general fund. This is just another way to share where our major revenue sources are for sales tax or for the general fund revenue and and sources of revenue for the general fund. So again, sales taxes are number one. Service fees, service fees include recreational fees, building permit fees, and also some transfers. You obviously have property tax, utility tax, BNO tax. We do get state shared revenue from the fuel tax as well as liquor and marijuana. And then indirect is related to the cost it takes to manage the three enterprise funds that we currently have within our budget. And then all of our revenue is a series of either transfers, beginning balance and also interest on revenue. I think it's always important to talk about what things cost because I think sometimes we take for granted what it truly does to pay for a premier park system. And so I'd just like to go through these steps. So our parks and rec department costs about two two point six million to provide. So that's the administration. That's also the parks and rec classes. That's what's contained in that number. We also have an aquatics program. We've had a long tradition of teaching people how to swim in this community. That also used to have a bigger number when we had Long Lake, but we have not been able to get enough lifeguards, but that is our lifeguard and aquatics program within that budget. We have very two. We have two big parks. One is the rack, which is kind of the jewel of our, which within our twelve hundred acre park system, and that is the rack. And that's about a one point two million cost to maintain that asset, which is, you know, brings in regional tournaments, but it's also a community park. We also know the cost it takes to one of our other largest parks, which is Raynor Vista, which is just under about a half million dollars. And then we have twenty four other park sites and other open spaces, and that takes about one point six million to maintain. So for our park system, that's a six point six million dollar commitment to maintain our twenty six sites as well as our twelve hundred acres of park land that we have for the community. Now we do the same thing for streets. So again, street department in general, that's about one point two million dollars. If you break out roadside and roadway maintenance, that takes about one point one million. Within that number is about a hundred and twelve thousand for snow removal. Some people are kind of curious about what we spend on that. That's what that number is. Street lighting, this is to maintain streets. It's also the energy it takes for street lights is about over eight hundred thousand. And then signs and markings, which is critical to really the enforcement and also a safe street system, just under five hundred thousand dollars. And then sidewalks, that's an ongoing program that obviously we need to maintain. And that's about a four million dollar commitment for a significant city street system as well as sidewalks. And then public safety, most people obviously care about public safety. This is the biggest expense that we have within the general fund. If we're talking about just the police department as a whole, it's about a sixteen point three million dollar commitment. If you just look at patrol, it's just under nine million. We have sixty one commissioned officers within the city of Lacey. But there's also the prosecution part of that. So when someone does break something in the municipal code, that is the cost to pay for prosecution. Court services, obviously, we contract out with Thurston County for our, in a sense, it's district court, but it acts as our municipal court. And then we have jail services, and then you have an eight point five million dollar investment in public safety for all those series of programs. Now, I do like to point out, if you took all of the fourteen million plus in sales tax and then half of eight million dollars in property tax, you would then just begin to pay for just public safety. Nothing else. I mean, that that's what eighteen point five million represents all of our sales tax and over half of our property tax revenue. Another way to kind of break out just expenditures within the general fund, police department, obviously our most significant commitment. So it's a six point three million. Public Works is next. They have the largest employee base within the city at almost fifteen million. The capital transfers, admin support, which is where city council, city manager, finance and other related services. I will point out one point two million at the very bottom. We are increasingly spending more and more on social services. I think this clearly states our ongoing investment in the community when it comes to those that are less in need, but that is a growing number in terms of our investment within our general fund. Again, another perspective on our general fund in terms of how costs are broken down, but essentially two thirds of our general fund expenses are related to labor and benefit costs. So that kind of shows you how the budget is broken up. And then just finally, this just shows the relationship with the general fund, which is about thirty five percent of the total budget, which is that hundred and seventy four million dollar number. So let's talk about some budget investments. I think you may be interested in. So this is what's included within the budget. There's about two million dollars. Council talked about this at the council retreat. We have some property acquisition that we're looking for a future public safety facility. The current facility in the foreground was built in nineteen eighty five. It's had a couple of adjustments or renovations, but it's clearly we're outgrowing that facility. If anyone's ever been to the rack and had to park on the parking lot that shade level, you will know that is a combination of dirt and gravel. And so during the winter months, that's a a difficult spot to park in and get out of. The budget includes a two point three million dollar investment to build a hard surface parking lot that will include three hundred and twenty seven stalls. That would be a nice addition with the rack park project. We're also including two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for climate action plan initiatives. As council knows, you adopted a brand new climate action plan as part of the comprehensive plan updates. And there's about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Sixty of it is to help coordinate two hundred thousand dollars worth of initiatives. At some point, council will have to agree what strategy you want to employ to make improvements with the climate action plan. So that would be a forthcoming item in twenty twenty two. Obviously, we talked about our park system and how much we care about it. Unfortunately, there are times when vandalism and other illegal activity occur within our park system for the security and the protection of this public access. We're expanding park security cameras to key sites like Raynor Vista. More expansion in the rack and also the Lacey Depot property. That's about a three hundred thousand dollar investment. We continue to replace our high-pressure sodium streetlights, which are not as energy efficient as LED. We are about halfway through that process of a ten-year program, but this is another two hundred thousand dollar investment to finish that program. We are continuing the very program to help neighborhoods. The average neighborhood grant is about two thousand. This is to help bolster our neighborhoods within the city of Lacey. And we have for the last three years now had a fairly good participation with our neighborhood program. Obviously, in twenty twenty one, we launched a very successful food truck kind of pilot project. Very excited about that. There is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars within the budget to provide utilities to provide utility hookups for food truck vendors participating in our food truck program. And there's also money set aside for potentially the Washington Food Truck Association for help with management, also marketing. So we're excited to expand and build upon the success of the food truck that we saw in twenty twenty one. As you know, during the council retreat, we talked about a commitment to play a roundabout, at least look at the feasibility of a roundabout Seventh Avenue that would connect both midtown with St. Martin's University. The preliminary results are is that a roundabout would work at that location. Now we need to start looking at design and what the right of way needs would be for a specific roundabout infrastructure for that area. So we have money included in this year's budget to tackle that project. Another project, and this is also going back to the woodland strategic plan before we changed it to Midtown, was to finish off unfinished streets within that area, which is a core area within the city of Lacey to grid streets and provide better circulation access to those properties. There is an unfinished connection on Fourth Avenue. This would eventually connect Golf Club to College Street. And so there's some preliminary design money to see the feasibility of that connection. And obviously, we have a commitment to our transportation benefit district. We'll be spending four point five billion, four point five million, not billion in our surface street system. This kind of shows you some of the areas that we'll be concentrating on such as Carpenter and Slater Kinney and Eighth Avenue. We have a very good street service program. As you know, we see our pavement management index every year. We're above eighty percent and we're very proud of that street rating. We have probably one of the best street ratings within the state of Washington and our continued investment, which the voters did approve, will help maintain that. And we do have forty thousand dollars in our arts program. So as you know, council discussed, we have an arts fund that's over two hundred thousand dollars now. We are working on a six-year program that Community Relations Committee has seen a first draft of forty thousand dollars is to take care of one of the first years of that six-year program, but that will eventually go before council for final adoption. We also just have the need to look at all of the facilities and buildings that we have with under the care of the city of Lacey, and that actually exceeds in hundreds of millions of dollars. And what we need to do is do a better job of anticipating renovations or needs within those facilities. So it just doesn't become just in time or we'd be more proactive. So we'll be investing in asset management software to actually better anticipate the needs of our facilities, given the increased facilities that we have under care within the city of Lacey. And this is somewhat exciting. I think everyone knows that most major manufacturers have talked about converting the majority of their production to electric vehicles. So F one fifty is one of the main vehicles that we use within Public Works. You may know that Ford announced a brand new all-electric vehicle in twenty twenty one that should be available in twenty twenty two. And we need to start having experience with how one we can actually have the infrastructure to support a fleet of EVs. And so we have just under forty four thousand dollars to complete a purchase. So we get experience and some real-life day-to-day working with an electric vehicle to meet our needs for the city. So that is in the budget also. I also want to highlight some budget initiatives that you should be aware of that are still within the budget that we're currently doing now and continue to carry on in twenty twenty two. One is we have a community resource unit, which has been a great proactive unit to engage our homeless population. Also working with our business community who may have been impacted by activity related to the house's population. A call-out officer, Beltran and Williams have done a significant job in dealing with any issues related to public property and any concern related to our house's population. So really proud of what they have achieved here in the last year. So again, we continue our community resource unit and work with our business community as well as our social service agencies to get people who are currently facing house or homelessness to get them in social services and court entry. We've also, as you know, are going to continue our partnership with the Olympia Behavioral Health Resources, which is our mobile outreach team. I think we recognize that we put a lot of burden on our police department when it comes to all the calls that we expect the police respond to. There are certain specialties that are better suited to crisis response specialists such as counselors or peer specialists that can actually respond to someone who is experiencing trauma that may be out in the community that could be homeless, that this is a better approach to dealing with that. And so in combination with our community resource unit, we have a mobile outreach team to actually do that. It is seven days a week, and we began this last fall. We have a mobile outreach team to actually do that. It is seven days a week and we began this last fall. We also have a two person, I call rapid response cleanup team. This is housed at our public works. People get concerned about just the debris and litter and shopping carts and graffiti. We now have a really a three part response when it comes to issues. That people are concerned about within the community. We have our community resource unit. We have our mobile outreach team. And when we see stuff that it seems to be left behind in our public spaces like shopping carts or litter. Those teams coordinate and we're actually able to respond that within twenty four hours. So I think that's been a good combination. Um, that we're continuing to work on and develop as years come. Think the other big initiative that we need to highlight within the budget is a body worn camera public uh safety system. So we believe this is going to cost about eight hundred eighteen thousand dollars for the first year, about three hundred thousand dollars. Um, in the ensuing years. I believe we have a great public safety uh department. I like, we have a great public department. We have a great relationship with our community when it comes to public safety. Um, this will only further enhance the trust um of our police officers and the men and women that you use the uniform. So. Again, this is something that will be initiated in twenty twenty two. So let's talk about the utility budget just for a minute. So utility budget is about ninety million dollars for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. Perhaps about fifty two percent of the total budget. But I want to take just a moment and just sort of discuss the significance of our utilities. And I think unfortunately, we somewhat take for granted. When we turn the faucet on or flush the toilet or when we drive on our roads. We produce two point seven billion gallons of water on an annual basis. That number is staggering when you say that out loud. When you talk about the sewer collected and conveyed annually, that's one point five billion gallons. And then when you talk about the catch basins that you may drive by, there's fifty two hundred within our community. That's not to mention the number of miles of water lines that we have or sewer lines or even the conveyance pipe for stormwater. So. Again, we have a very significant, large and complex utility system. That speaks to the budget of ninety million dollars. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, we do have a water comp plan as well as a wastewater comp plan that is nearing completion. This shows you the future outlook for investment within those utilities. Um, we have some big years coming up in terms of annual investment. Um, twenty twenty two, we're looking at about a twenty three million dollar investment in water capital improvement projects. Majority of those projects are related to maintenance or state mandates that we need to meet. And then you kind of look in the next future years, you know, twenty twenty three, we have twenty five million. And then we still have in the high teens in the next ensuing years. So that shows the water. To support that type of capital improvement program. Unfortunately, we do need to have rates that support that type of activity. Um, you may recall that we um council made the decision to do a five percent adjustment mid year. The thirty three dollars fourteen cents was the result of that decision. This year, we're proposing a single year rate, even though we understand we projected future rates out for um the next really five years. But for twenty twenty two, we're looking at a single rate adjustment of five point two five percent. So in terms of a utility bill for just water, it'd be about thirty four dollars and eighty eight cents, which includes. Uh, utility tax as well as the fire suppression tax that's included in that. And we'll give you an overall bill at the end of this. Um, from the wastewater perspective, again, this shows you the outlook for future capital improvements, about a forty four million dollar program. Uh, next two years, we're looking at about sixteen million of total projects. Again, significant amount of investment in those utilities. Again, as a result, we need a rate structure that supports that. So again, in twenty twenty one, we had a five percent mid rate adjustment and then twenty twenty two, we're proposing a nine point five percent adjustment. Which would result in a seventy two dollars and eighty five cent charge, which includes both Lacey and Lot. And we'll break that out earlier. Think I will point out, part of the reason we had a consistent rate in the future was a mind. Being mindful of the debt impact for customers. And so as council knows, we looked at different variations in terms of rates and by. Having a consistent rate in the future, we could at least predict our future debt requirements and actually reduce those debt requirements in the future. Kind of a global view of really our utility budget from twenty twenty two versus twenty twenty one. Uh, what this shows is broken up by water, wastewater and stormwater. Uh, we have about a forty five million dollar total water utility budget. If you take the combination of the maintenance operation. The capital improvements that are slated and then also the debt that is also operating within those utilities. Again, you're seeing reductions in most areas except for storm, and that's just showing the level of activity that has fallen off from one year to the other. But those do change from year to year. So then when we look at just rates overall, um, I will just point to the area of the twenty twenty two Lacey proposed rate. So when you look at stormwater, we have a thirteen dollar seventy four charge. That's part of the bill. Uh, the next one is Lot, which is forty six dollars and eleven cents. That's their portion of it. And then our wastewater is at twenty six seventy four and then water is thirty four eighty eight. So that would be the proposed total bill if someone used seven hundred cubic feet of water. So let's talk about some of the planned utility improvements I'm just going to highlight. We have a four million dollar project um up in the Beechcrest area. We've consolidated a couple wells. We're going to create a new well in seventeen, but that also requires treatment. Uh, so that will be getting that project in twenty twenty two, but that's a four million dollar investment. We also have a very continuous and annual water line replacement project. So we have uh. Three major areas that we're going to be doing some water main replacement project. One's on Carpenter Road. And then we have Seventh Avenue near Slater Kenny and then also Fourteenth Avenue off of Slater Kenny all the way to College Street. So you'll be seeing uh water mains replaced in those areas at a tune about one point two five million. You're also seeing really the second year, you probably saw this or remember this from the twenty twenty one budget where we're doing our initial staging and planning for this. Uh, you should start to see this go vertical for the uh three thirty zone zone reservoir or the Terry Cargill Reservoir. I mean, that's about an eight million dollar investment for twenty twenty one or twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two. Um, we also have a rehab uh for one of our lift stations, lift station nineteen off of Lamb Drive and Commerce. It's in the area where um. Stottlemyre, Stottlemyre uh winery is or shipwreck beads in that location. We're having issues with uh rocks and other issues. Um, we're we're not having the reliability we need for that lift station. So that will be replaced with our new standards, especially a submersible pump. Um, so it's a two point one million dollar project. Uh, lift station three will be replaced. Uh, you may recall um this requiring an ac- or a acquisition of. Property in a house. This is one of our oldest lift stations that we have in the city of Lacey and it's undersized and we need to replace that lift station. Uh, we're also banning um a lift station in the Aldi, Aldi Glen neighborhood area. That's about one point five million dollars. We also have a Woodland Creek oil water separator project. We have a current oil water separator project, but it's not meeting the needs um of. That facility. So that's going to be replaced and that's to ensure that we protect one of our significant creeks within the city of Lacey, which is Woodland Creek. And then for stormwater, we have the Westminster Pond Rehabilitation uh project. At some points, stormwater ponds are almost like a sponge and they get so much sediment and at some point they need to be. In a sense, uh reconditioned and reclaimed where you take out the sediment from the bottom, put new vegetation in there and make sure that they're operating properly. So they're getting the treatment. That they were originally designed for. So that is in the twenty twenty two budget. Want to just briefly talk about lodging tax. Um, as everyone knows, we have about eight hotels within the city of Lacey, six hundred fifty two rooms. Anytime that you rent a room within the city of Lacey, there is a four percent lodging tax uh attached to that bill. This supports any tourism promotion or tourism related facility activities. So the rack obviously fits under that category or if you're promoting the city of Lacey in general. This shows a history of our budgets, as I pointed out earlier with the special funds. In twenty nineteen, we were getting close to about a six hundred thousand dollar budget. To maintain our events and festivals and promotion activities as it relates to the lodging tax revenue. And then twenty twenty, that sort of fell off off the cliff. And we really, that is one area that we did see the loss in revenue because people were not traveling. And people were not staying at hotels as they were in twenty nineteen. We pretty much committed to uh service organizations like um. Washington Center, the VCB, the Chamber, and did those activities because events could not be held in twenty twenty. So in twenty twenty one, um, obviously, we've increased that a little bit to do more stuff. I'm sorry, in twenty twenty one. That's when we um committed to the VCB and sort of our organizations that promote the area. And then twenty twenty two, we're hoping to get events back. And so you're seeing a a budget that is more in par with twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen. So for twenty twenty two, you'll see some of the events that you may be familiar with. So the lodging tax committee is recommending the Lacey Spring Fun Fair, the barbecue festival. The Senior Games, Hammer Park Concert Events, to name a few. The July third fireworks, Polyfest. And the new two um lodging tax funding is um a South Sound Chamber twenty twenty two golf classic event. Um, the South Sound Chamber Winter Fest Sip Saber Shop. And uh, a South Sound Block Party, assuming a location can be found in Lacey. And then the American Lung Association has a Reach the Beach um cycling event that starts with a rack and then goes to the beach. So again, I want to talk about our debt. I think it's very important that we manage our debt. Purposefully and responsibly. What this. Graph shows is that statutorily, we could have debt that would be close to five hundred ninety million dollars. Our debt, though, is thirteen point seven million. I think, again, that speaks volume to the responsibility. In terms of our our debt that we've taken on as a public agency. Um, again, this is another way to show what our bond pos- our bond capacity, because it is related to assessed valuation. So as our assessed valuation grows. So does our uh debt capacity. And again, you've seen really we're at high at twenty four and now we're down to thirteen. And again, the good news here is that we're paying off one of our um voter approved bonds. So as I mentioned before, in twenty twenty. Which is kind of interesting fact that that bond measure passed by one vote. So it's one of those instances where we talk about votes matter. When the voters in twenty or two thousand agreed to fund new fire stations and new fire engines. Um, one vote actually got it over the sixty percent super majority. So that's always an interesting story. So in that regard, they approved five point nine nine million dollars worth of funds for those projects. The last payment will be December first, twenty twenty one. So that. Four hundred sixty two thousand dollars will fall off and that will be paid in full. We now only have two voter approved instruments that are out there related to our parks. Um, and that will represent at least for this year about a seven cents in our excess levy rate. If you want to look at our total debt position, this includes both our debt from the utility, which is obviously responsibility, utility payers, not necessarily voter approved. Um, but it shows that we have that thirteen point seven million of outstanding balance for twenty twenty one. Our annual payments are just under two million. And then you see again the tax rate that's related to our excess levy. That just shows that we wiped out one of our debt instruments. So again, I I want to say I'm very passionate about when we talk about government and I'm. I'll say at times defensive about what we do and the value that we provide to the community. And again, I'll focus again on property taxes and the value that we bring. What this chart is trying to demonstrate. Really is the one percent inflation cap and then what an average house is done. So again, I want to point out that for many years, we were under that one percent limitation. But something did change in twenty eighteen and when people talked about their property taxes going up, it's not necessarily related to the city. It is related to the state and the school districts portion. That was really a response to the McCleary decision, trying to solve the school. Um, payment problem that was ordered by the State Supreme Court. So when you see those numbers go above that inflationary line, um, that is the legislative fix to the McCleary decision. So again, going back to a city focus, if you took the average house, it does stay on more of a straight line. Again, the, if you look at twenty ten, that is when a city property owner within Lacey also paid for or we collected for fire services. We decided not to collect anymore when the fire district annexes that we immediately dropped down. But really, for the last ten plus years, we've been on a slow uh level course. I always like to talk again about the value that we provide. And again, when you think of houses, four hundred fifty thousand assessed value. And you think of all the things that we provide when it comes to parks, when it comes to the police, when it comes to infrastructure. When it comes to general services, either be permitting or even the service that city council provides our residents that costs you four hundred twenty eight dollars on an annual basis. Average cell phone per year is getting close to fourteen hundred dollars. A used car payment is almost fifty two hundred dollars. Your cable bill is twenty six hundred. And if you were so inclined to buy the new iPhone Pro Max, that's over a thousand bucks. So again, I just want to show that we have a great value when it comes to our taxpayers. And some of these sort of everyday uses that we think are critical. Um, does not compare really to the value that we provide to residents when it comes to city government. Again, it's good that voters are informed of how their property taxes are distributed. But this graph, I think, aptly demonstrates is that if you combine state and school, that is sixty four percent of your property taxes. If you look at the city, we are nine percent of the portion of your bill. And then other is made up of library, medic one, Port of Olympia and then conservation futures. Another just sort of adjustment in terms of what is property taxes doing, at least for twenty twenty one. Like I mentioned early on, that the part one and part two of the school levy for um the McCleary fix, that's a fixed rate. So if your property values are going to raise, because it's a fixed levy rate, then your property taxes will raise. But if you do look at Lacey, you see last year we're at nine point five percent and now we're at nine percent. And that's uh true of Fire District three as well as Thurston County. So again, just to kind of emphasize, um, we talk about, again, the value. It's the first time I remember that we could say that if you took a year to year snapshot of our services. And you combine our property taxes with other um a house from twenty one to twenty twenty two. At least by our calculations, assuming your house did not increase more than eleven point four percent in value. You would see roughly a nineteen dollar decrease from last year's bill. And that really is a direct result of paying off the fire bond. I think another important tool that people should be aware of is really the property tax tool that is on the assessor's office at Thurston County. As well as the treasurer's office. And um. I'll just briefly connect into uh this website, but I think it's a really. Good tool when we're talking about empowering property tax owners and making sure that they have all the information and understand really where their taxes are going. So if um. I put in my name. I could then navigate. On the last three years of the taxable value of my property. I could see percentage wise where my taxes are going to go. You could see the the limit that is considered non voted, which is your your uh regular levies. And then you can see the portion that is actually voter approved, which voters agreed to tax themselves beyond the regular levy. Again, I think this is a great tool to inform, again, taxpayers where their money goes and how it's allocated. So I encourage anyone who's seen this tonight to actually take advantage of those. Um, how your property taxes are distributed by going to the homepages of both the treasurer's office as well as the assessor's office in Thurston County. And again, just as a a kind of a wrap up for budget comparison. So if you take the property tax. If you take the water, the wastewater, the stormwater compared to twenty twenty one and then to twenty twenty two. You will still see a reduction on a per month basis of what the impact of the twenty twenty two budget is compared to the twenty twenty one budget. So again, I think that's um a good story to share. So with that, obviously, we rely on a robust community to provide input on our budget. Because we provide essential services to the community. Um, our first public hearing will be held November fourth on revenue sources, which would include property tax as well as rates for um our utilities. There'll also be an opportunity as a separate public hearing to talk about the total budget that I just presented in total. And the finance director will also provide an overview of what's in the twenty twenty two budget. You'll have a second opportunity to provide input on the budget uh on November eighteenth. All these meetings start at four o'clock. Um, and public uh public testimony will be collected on both of those dates. And then right now, we have a projected adoption by council for the budget uh December second uh on Thursday. So that is the schedule. Um, if you are technically inclined, you can capture the QR code and actually go right to the budget. It's on our website. Um, and you can actually see the the full uh budget and it's twenty nine funds and how we actually pay for essential services within the city of Lacey. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions of council. I'll stop sharing my screen. Yeah, that didn't seem like a hundred and twenty slides, did it?
No, that went pretty well. Yeah.
Donna did a great job.
Hey, I do. So Troy has obviously come on screen. I really got to give a a call out Troy Wu for just all the help within the twenty twenty. Budget, twenty twenty two budget, as well. Budget, twenty twenty two budget, as well as the directors and basically coming with realistic proposals for us to consider and actually go through it. Chrissy Wolf and Chelsea Yarwood are key members of the finance team. And quite frankly, this is a. Seems like a three to four month effort as we get to this stage to do that. And of course, the slides are really the the credit of Donna Flesiano. I did a little bit. I did the Ford Lightning truck picture, but the majority is attributed attributed to Donna. So I thank her for that. So I appreciate that.
That's great. Any any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Malcolm.
Oh, sorry, Malcolm.
Did you confuse the two of us?
No, I don't know why I was looking at that.
No, I appreciate if you did. I'm good with it. I. Quick question, just an observation. And Fife. Does does some pretty robust numbers. For a city of their size. They, wow, those are some impressive number, nine hundred.
Auto mall. That's all the dealerships there.
You know, and 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 it doesn't seem like they have, you know, all that much. Square mileage, they, you know, I I think a lot of it is that they've, you know, a lot of their square mileage is right on I five. A very nice section of I five where, you know, and they've used every inch of it seemingly. Do you foresee a time that we might catch up to to some of that type of? Usage of our frontage and.
I I I hope so.
Are you talking about the the probably next to the bells?
Not necessarily. Just, you know, there's. I know that, you know, some of that stuff is is commercial usage in terms of, you know, office space and lots got some. Some things there in the Farm Bureau building and so on and so forth. I'm just wondering if 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 we have, you know. A vision for a little bit more retail outside of the Gateway Project, of course, because we 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 know the situation with that. But but, you know, some some type of revenue producing, you know, get us caught up and and, you know, generate some more. Visitation to the city, some more revenue to the city. Because we have such incredible frontage right on, you know, one of the busiest freeways in America. And I I just, we I don't. We're not using as much of it as some of the other jurisdictions. And 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 if we don't start capturing some of it, I feel like we're going to get so far behind that, you know, it. I just, I'm I'm just looking, I'm reaching here.
I think it's, I think we've had discussions with council in the past that we we agree that dealerships would be a nice addition to our retail. And even just for residents, I mean, you really have no options to either have to go to Olympia or North to go buy a vehicle. And so. There's a couple of things, though. There is dealership footprints that you have to stay outside of so that they do control in a sense how many dealerships could be. You know, so many miles out. But you are right in terms of Pierce County does have dealerships that are not present Thurston County. I think I was just talking to the mayor about this. I mean, we think of. You know, Land Rover or Mercedes or, you know, sort of high end vehicles like that. I mean, there are people in Thurston County that drive those vehicles. So. And I think at some point, the congestion is getting such at the Squally River. That the market's going to have to pay attention and ship because I think, you know, we've talked about this for years, that traffic patterns are changing because it's more difficult to go north. But I think Fife is. Plus eleven thousand population.
Yeah.
And they have an outsized revenue base for the population served. So am I envious of my neighbor? Do I covet my neighbor a little bit?
They should have streets of gold up there then.
There you go.
Uh, Councilmember Cunkel?
Yeah, dead tailing what Malcolm was saying. I I'm optimistic that we are getting that semi truck dealership and service area. I do, well, I'm hopefully optimistic that it's going to be a magnet for other. Life kind commodities that are going to come to our city. I do think that we may see at least one or two dealerships. In the not so distant future, coming to Lacy, realizing the potential and the the strength that we have, being one of the most. Disciplined conservative cities in the county. I do think that is going to come. It's just a matter of time. So I'm optimistic and and I'm really pleased with the preliminary looks at the budget. So so those are my two cents with the one I had.
Appreciate the, so the tech equipment is kind of exciting to see that. I obviously have not bought a semi truck, but I think looking at the website, they're about a hundred fifty thousand. So it's about, you know, three to four trucks, depending on what you get. So that.
Do we have a, we have a team of people that are gonna put pressure on the salesman over there to perform?
That's right.
So Deputy Mayor?
So, well, two things. One is I was really pleased to see there's. Funds in there for an electric maintenance vehicle to try that out. That's excellent. But. For the roundabout that is being designed for Seventh Avenue. Is the St. Martin's working with us on that or will it just stop before and they will then eventually? Add a lane into the on that side or not? I mean, how's that thinking?
So part of the need for that, the dollar amount is to figure out a design and what the actual footprint is going to be on St. Martin's side. So they do realize that there will be. Land that would be needed to accommodate a roundabout on that side. Rick's team and Rick specifically is working on a an agreement that will at some point. Look at a potential partnership with the city, probably MGR as well as St. Martin's, if that project's going to go forward.
The the preliminary design, Deputy Mayor. Shows a pedestrian path on that's on the St. Martin's side that goes straight into the college. So it'll be pedestrian only. There won't be vehicles that go through there, but. It's a it's a really beautiful preliminary design and St. Martin says, you know, I've seen it and realized that it will require. Some lands on on their side. And so they're they're well aware. Preliminary have been talking about, you know, would be able to give that property to the city of Lacy to make that make that happen. So.
So there will only be three exits on the roundabout. There won't be four.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think Sam Orange has not envisioned car traffic to go into their campus from that roundabout, but what it will do is facilitate. Northbound left hand turn into Seventh Avenue, which is currently restricted. So that will allow better access to the midtown area. But it does provide a safer passage for students and others coming from St. Martin's to the midtown area.
Great. Councilmember, back to Councilmember Cunkel?
Yeah. And so on on that issue, my biggest concern with that project. Is the effect it's going to have during peak hours. That's one of the busiest parts of College Street during busy hours. And having a roundabout in there, is that going to? Make it even more difficult to commute to and from home? So those are going to be my my biggest questions when we're looking at those preliminary plans.
That's a, that's a great observation. I think what you'll find out is that. The predominant movement will still be southbound and some on northbound college. But that's going to be the predominant movement. You do have a light, though, that does provide a little bit of gap. But I think you're right. The majority of the traffic is going to be southbound on college.
Yeah, I think that's going to be a mess. But I am cautious about that plan.
Well, I just, I I just don't think there's going to be a lot of right hand turns going on there. It's mostly commuter traffic. So it's just going to keep going right through that roundabout and not really slow down very much. Though the question is, is what happens when pedestrians are are crossing? So they're going to have to sort of tie that up with a light a little bit, and I'm sure.
Yeah, that's kind of a mess, but it'll be interesting to see that plan.
Okay, well, I have some questions, Scott. On the workforce enhancements, obviously, it's really good to see that we're going to be making some long needed investments there. And it's pretty significant on 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 the increase, which is which is good. Are you going to wait until the first of the year to start on those hires? Or are you going to start looking at some of those now to sort of jumpstart that?
So the one position, if I, if we could start early, I guess, looking at counts would be the grant administrator. Because that is one that we do need to kind of start the process. As you know, even if we start today. It's going to take at least a couple of months to get that advertised and go through the interview process.
So that that was going to be my next question. I was going to say for out of those. Out of the workforce, you know, who do you? Who do you need to get started on as soon as possible? And so it's the grant writer? Okay, I I think you should get on that then for sure. Lenny, do you have something to add?
Yeah, just quick question. So I know we have those enhanced, those additional positions. But how many unfilled positions do we still have right now that are already budgeted for? And I know there's quite a few. I know in the police department, for instance, we have quite a few, correct?
Yeah, we're still about twenty positions that are unfilled due to, again, recent retirements or people being promoted and leaving a vacancy. And so HR has probably been the busiest it's been since. I don't, since I've been here, quite frankly.
And I'm assuming we're actively seeking candidates for those positions right now, right, for those open.
We are. And, you know, I just had this conversation with Councilmember Cox. So. Again, one of our biggest deficit areas is in our police department because we've had even just here in the last month or so, four retirements. It takes a good year just to get a police officer, one, go through the background checks. So we'll just let me back it up. Six months to go through the academy and then three months to get through our field training officer program. So there's nine months. But then again, the front end, you gotta go through the interview process, go through the background check. And then about the time you get through that process, it's a good year before you get that person on the road and independent.
Yeah, I know it's a long time. So it's always. How does that work with retirements? Is that something that you try to? Talk to the people who it looks like they're going to be retiring sometime soon, see what's on their schedule so you can go out ahead? How how does that work? Or you just wait till after that?
No, I think, I mean, the chief is in constant contact with the officers. I mean, some of them are anticipated. But again, this has been a tough year for law enforcement and. I think when some people have reached their age and I think they made the personal decision, it's it's kind of hard to change their perspective on that.
Okay. I was looking at the the slide on the art on the art program.
Yes.
I think it said forty thousand. But I thought our art program was tied to our population. Did you change that this year?
So it's not. So we're not funding basically the the two dollar per capita. All we're doing is what we think we're going to spend this year, not necessarily what we're going to collect. So.
That was just the spend number and that wasn't the collect number.
Right. So if you look at your city council budget, you'll see public art and say forty thousand. We're still developing the final plan. That's before the community relations committee. We can always amend the budget once we have a a clear direction on where we're going to go, but we want to put some money knowing that we're going to do some activity this year.
Okay, because I I was wondering where you're coming up with that number since we don't even have anything. Really on, anyway, and about the forty thousand dollar number was just a random. That my next question is, is the CRU? Team, is that budgeted under social service? Do you have it under the social services or including under social services? Or is that? And it's under public safety?
It's not. That's a really good question. So Troy and I talk about this all the time. We don't have all the. Costs associated with how we respond to homelessness and other activities. I mean. Theoretically, we could be putting some of Rick's time in there with the RHC part of council's time. So there is numbers in there that aren't totally factored, but the. Mobile outreach team is in there. I don't think that, well, and the rapid response team is also in there. But you're right, the CRU team is not in there. And that's a, call it three hundred thousand dollars. That's probably not representing that number.
Well, that is, in my mind, really a big part of that. And so I. I just, you know, I, we constantly hear falsely that Lacy is 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 not doing anything or not doing enough on on when it comes to this issue. Our budgeted will just tells a different story. And so I think it's important to sort of properly. Get that number across, you know, not only for our our residents, but for our our regional partners as well. So. Deputy Mayor, you got something?
Yeah, just a follow up question. And I realize it probably isn't a lot of money, but. Obviously, there is needs for. Equipment and whatever else goes with cleanup and and everything else. Where does that come out of? Does it come out of the same CR? Budget or does it come out of safety or where?
So that didn't get included in this year's budget because we had the startup costs of the, say, the response team in twenty twenty one. But you're right, that's another cost that. If you wanted to get down to the point, are we capturing all the costs? I guess the quick answer is no. I mean, you bring up a very good point. We're spending. More than the one point two communicates, but we're trying to do a better job of trying to state that this is becoming a larger responsibility or. Commitment on the budget. And that's why we started doing the social services division of part of the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
You remember, right? We didn't even have that. As a separate budget item in in our budget, just what, a couple of years ago, last year?
That was in twenty nineteen. Is that when we started to do it? Yeah.
Wow, time flies. Yeah, so that was just last year. Mike, get some?
I wanted to go back to the FTE shortages in regards to overtime. Because I look at it like street funds, if you let your street get below fifty, sixty percent, it costs three times as much to. Rebuild that road as compared to maintaining it. Where are we in a like critical mass when it comes to overtime? Like our officers or public works or any any department in particular?
I would say at this point, no. Yes, we rely a lot on overtime, but that has somewhat been. Blurred, if you will, because we've had so many vacant positions in police. So you had to rely on the overtime budget to make up for that lost time. So again, we're not going to get a true picture until we get fully staffed in the police department. That would be a better opportunity to kind of look at what the overtime budget is doing.
Yeah, that's always been kind of tough over the years, looking at that overtime budget. Because it's always, I remember years ago, looking at and going, wow, that's a huge number. That. Seems like it's being mismanaged. But then you start. Understanding how shifts work and everything else. And it's just, it's really difficult to, especially when you're down some officers, to to figure that all out and get to buy it. Councilmember Cox?
Just a a few questions. Scott, this may be an editing question, but I thought I heard you say. At one point that the total assessed value of the city is now nine billion. Was that? Okay. But in the example that you gave us about the mechanics of the budget, you cited eight billion.
Yeah, I was just trying to throw it and I hopefully clarified it. My example was not supposed to represent the budget. I was just trying to throw a number out there. And but yes, you. And that means you really enjoyed the slides.
We lost a billion in translation.
All right. Well, thanks for.
Troy is very proud of my budget mechanics, property tax slide.
Yeah, I thought it was good.
Yeah, definitely.
And I think, are you guys going to talk Troy into selling his Tacoma? Because that's really the big question I have.
Was that a picture of his Tacoma?
Close.
Go go ahead.
Okay, so you mentioned in the. Piece about replacing the lift station that the city had to acquire a house. And my question, what is becoming of that house?
So you may recall, we did that acquisition, I think, two years ago, and Homes First is currently occupying that.
Okay, will that continue to?
The house unfortunately is, I think we know that has to eventually come down as part of our project and we're working with Homes First for a transition for that family.
That's next year, right? They're gonna.
They'd like to start soon. I mean, it's typically, there's there's money in the budget to even begin some preliminary work on that. But I guess the good news at the time when we did that. Acquisition, we thought we'd have for maybe a year and we've actually had it for at least two years. So.
Okay. Yeah, I thought that was the same one we were talking about previously, but I just wanted to verify that. And. I just want to preface what I'm about to say by saying this, this is an amazing job that you do with the budget. And helping us, you know, break it down into. Bite sized pieces and really understand that. And as a city council member, I think we need to understand it the way that you're presenting it. But. I would ask that, you know, in future budgets, we take it a step further. Because my worry is that people who are listening to this presentation. Where we talk about, yeah, your tax rate is lower this year, you know, than it or will be lower than it is this year. That's not what they see on their total property tax bill. And I I think. While we we are telling the truth about, you know, what it actually costs the city and what the taxpayer's share of the city cost is. I think things like that tend to undermine faith in government. And it. I mean, we're all telling the truth here. There's no, you know, doubt about that. But it's just. I think it undermines public confidence in what we put out there.
And appreciate that comment again. And when I say we're talking about a nineteen dollar increase, I'm obviously, I'm, I guess, what's the word when in sports, I'm a homer, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to, you know. Again, celebrate what we're doing here as a city. And you are right, we have no control over what the state level does. And you are right, we have no control over what uh, the state level does or a school district does. And again, Troy and I have talked about this, the, the mechanics of their property tax are completely different with the McCleary fix. And so by virtue of a fixed rate, your, your property tax will go up. But that's not under control. We had that one slide that did show property taxes going up, but we don't have information on all the other taxing districts. That, that's a fair point.
Well, and particularly when you say that the city property tax represents about nine percent of their total tax bill.
Correct.
I mean, that is very significant with, you know.
Well, and it's, it, and that's why I really encourage anyone who's listening, um, and who's, who's paying property taxes in the city of Lacey to go onto the assessor and treasures um, website and put in your name, just like Scott did. And, and take a look at that text, uh, that tool, which I did, uh, as I was saying there. First of all, I, I gasped on, on how much my assessed value went up over the past three years. Um, it's, it was crazy how much it went up. And then, but then I went into look at this why it's been paying for the city. And it's, you know, it's, has stayed relatively flat compared to the rest of my property tax bill, which is just gone through the roof. So um, that's why it's so difficult to talk about property taxes. Because we're, we're playing all, we're playing by different rules, you know, and the, with the schools uh, in the states. It, that rate they said, when your value goes up, then malinfection goes up for the rate. That's not what happens, you know, with it, with the city's side of it. Um, when your assessed value, you know, when the whole city's assessed value goes up, your actually rate goes down. And so that's why it's so confusing. I think um, we're on the right track though of putting on these budget workshops. And even what Scott did this year in this budget presentation is the first time he's actually ever done in there and, and tried to explain to the uh, the property, you know, uh, the citizens of Lacey, how, how this thing is calculated and what we're trying to do. And so it's, it's really important. I'm, I'm glad we had the uh, conversation with council. I think we should do that every year and continue to talk about this. And I, I agree, you need to be open and transparent as, as much as we possibly can. Um, and I think the, the fact that the person kind of treasurer and assessor got together to put, to create this tool um, is, is really important. So people can go in there and better understand what property taxes are. But um, I just paid my second half of the money, property taxes. Uh, and uh, yeah, that is a tough check to write, for, for sure. Um, and it, cause it's, it's a, my, my property taxes have gone up so much, but it's not the city of Lacey that's driving that. And so that's what's so hard to talk about. Um, do you have anything else?
Well, I'll just add to what Councilmember Cox said, I, and go emphasize again on that tool. We really, I think we can talk about it during the revenue hearing to, again, encourage people to go to the assessor and treasures website. I mean, the link I had in the slides is empowering taxpayers. People need to understand. If they're concerned about where their tax dollars go, then they need to understand how they're being spent. And that's probably the best tool I've seen in terms of how your taxes are distributed.
Counsel, um, conversations with council should mention that as well, when we have that.
So um, I just have uh, two quick, more quick things and then I'll um, go on to any other questions. Body cameras.
Yes.
This is something that this council and um, I know council member Greenstein and myself have been saying, we need to do this. And we know it's gonna be expensive. There's just no other way around it. It's, it's by far time that we have this for the protection of our officers, for the protection of our, our community. So I, I'm really happy to see that you're, we're finally taking a step. Um, but thank you to Chief Almada for, for taking that on. Um, my question is, is, so we're, we're budgeting it for next year. When do you think they will be online and, and, and operational? Or have you know?
That's a great question. I think there's a couple of steps that have to happen. One is, um, we need to figure out a system that, um, you know, we feel comfortable with. There's not just the technology part of it. There's the public records part of it. We obviously need to hire the, you know, the IT specialist as well as a record specialist and have them on board, um, anticipating the program. Um, and then there is, um, we are in negotiations talking about this very issue because it is gonna be a change of working conditions. And everyone needs to know what the rules are engagement when it comes to using the body cameras, so.
Long, uh, short answer, you don't know?
Yeah, that's a great answer. I don't know. I mean, if, if I was optimistic, maybe the latter half of next year.
Okay. Well, I think it's important because we're, now we're talking about, now it's in the budget. So people are gonna sort of expect it and it's, we're still probably later next year before we're actually gonna see it. I, I think that's probably optimistic to get everyone on board, pick out the program, do all this. And that's, it's, it's gonna be a lot of work, but so I'm, I'm glad we're at least getting started. So that's, that's one question. Uh, the second question, and I'm not sure if the rest of the council cut is, under the utility rates. Um, we had a, a budget workshop or pre, pre-budget workshop, uh, I think the last, um, last Thursday, right? Was it last Thursday? And in, in that, um, you talked about you, um, utility rates and us um, approving utility rates for the next five years and next year's budget. That's not what showed up in your budget presentation today. So have you changed your mind?
So again, I think the budget workshop is useful for us because we get input from council directly. And I think the, where we understood the council felt more comfortable with a single year rate adjustment as opposed to a multi-year rate adjustment. So um, for this budget that I presented, yes, we're considering only an adjustment for twenty twenty-two. Um, but for full disclosure, I mean, we think we understand what the rates are gonna be for future years based on the need. Um, but we can revisit that in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's a big, big change from our, the pre-budget workshop. So I, I appreciate the clarification there. Deputy Mayor?
So, um, couple of things, um, following up with the cameras. Um, have we worked out how, because this came up so over two or three years um, about protecting victims with the camera issue? Have we solved that issue? And then the other thing is about the utility rates when, and apparently the mayor was not there. It does show that we actually save money if we do it over five years. But we're not going to try to save any money to do that?
No, I think they're just uh, gonna approve it on a regular, starting next year. There's, is, that's gonna be the, the rate and then we're gonna revisit it. But it's, it's, like I said last on the pre-budget workshop. It's not the, the, it's the, for me, it's about um, trying to approve rates for future councils. Which I had, had the issue, you know, some little heartburn over. And so it's not what the, I guess it's a little semantics there. Cause every year you have to adopt a budget. So every year I don't, you know, it didn't make sense why you just wanna go through that process every single year. Cause things could change and I, I, you just don't know. Anyway, that, that was my.
So those were my two questions. So um, first of all, did we solve the issue of protecting victims with the camera?
So I think what we were communicating in the past is that when you go into a situation where you have a body cam and there's minors involved, those video or pictures of minors need to be redacted. So we were just recognizing the fact that if video is released, there's gonna be some staff time involved to redact that information. So it's honestly something we solved. It's just a reality of that kind of program. And then, and then I, I guess your second question or remark was more observation. But I think what, going back in, I think uh, our May and June sort of discussion about water rates. The reason we kind of looked at a five plus rate increase for both water and wastewater was we do know it will reduce overall debt in future years. So that was at least a recognition at that time. But again, based on recent conversations, we're presenting a single year rate adjustment.
Okay.
So which leads me to my, my last question, um, debt and the utilities. Uh, how much debt do we currently have in the utilities and how much debt? Um, do you think we're gonna have to go out? And, and when we go out for debt, are you talking about going out and, and selling bonds or, or? Is that, so where, where are we at in the utility debt on that? I don't, I can't remember.
So I could show the, I could show the one slide that shows all of our debt in utilities.
Yeah, and, and I'm just, I'm trying to remember when we took on that debt.
So in twenty thirteen, we did some revenue bonds for both water and stormwater. We have a balance of about six million dollars.
And, and then it's like it paid off?
So that won't be paid off until twenty thirty-three.
Twenty thirty-three.
We have some LID bonds, but that's, that's more relevant to the benefiting property owner. So really that is the only um, outstanding utility debt that we have.
So it was just that, that, that we, or in twenty thirteen that we went out for.
Troy, do you have, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the LID debt counts against the utility, but of course it has compulsory payments, so.
Yep. Okay, well, that's the last of my questions. Um, anyone else? Uh, Malcolm?
I, I just want to be the first one to say, uh, good job uh, for Troy and Scott. Uh, it looks like under your watch, the city value of this place has doubled. The average consumer is paying less and we are in the top seventy-five cities in the United States. So thank you both for, for all that you've done.
You're welcome. Yeah, absolutely. You did a great job as always, and that, um, thank you. I know it's a lot of work to put these together and um, you're doing a really good job. So both of you guys are great. Anything else from the council?
Hey, any suggestions for slides? I'd be happy to add to my hundred.
I love your slides.
Okay, well then, it looks like we have reached the end of our agenda. So it's good seeing everyone, great presentation, Scott and Troy. Um, I think Malcolm uh, said it pretty straight. I mean, look at, things are going very, very well in, in the city of Lacey. And I'm really proud of, of where we, where we come from and where we're at. Um, it's hard to think back, you know, even, you know, ten years ago, um, that now we'd be like, you know, the largest city in Thurston County. Our, our, our budget would be at where it is today, our, our, our collection from sales tax. Uh, you know, e- everything that's happened, the, the size of our city has just grown so much. It's um, it's pretty amazing. And we, yet we're continuing to provide a great quality of life uh, here for our, our residents and our businesses and our, our visitors. So, and then there's great things on, on the way. Um, I'm really excited. I think that this, the whole council is extremely excited about the, the future of the Julio Park uh, um, Greenway and what that's gonna do to our, you know, for our community. It's, it's really um, putting Lacey on the map with, with what we have there. And it's been very exciting to see that. So there's some really great things in our future. So thank you again, um, for, for all you're doing. Um, and that means we've reached the end of our agenda. And so um, I'm calling this meeting adjourned and as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.
Yes, council.